Most we are talking pennies a year. Please, take the pennies from your salary and provide the difference in that. Your $178,000, take the pennies every year and provide the difference at the increase that you're looking for. But thank Mr. Zine, Councilman Zine, for eliminating that from this action.
This is the reason why I came down here and to support Ms. Hahn because, you know, a lot of people say this is a tax. I don't consider this a tax. I consider this save our children. And, you know, we all think that it can't happen to us, that our children are safe. It doesn't matter where you live in this city. You can live in Porter Ranch, you can live in San Pedro, you can live in North Hollywood, the West Side. Your child is in danger of being affected by gangs and drugs. I know that personally, my wife and I know. And we would give everything we had if we could save our boys. I'd give you everything I have. I'd sell my soul to the devil. But I can't. But you can bring this. That's right, Mr. Cardenas, I would. You know that? I would sell my soul. Because integrity is everything. You know what I'm saying? But this is very important. This is such a big issue. And I want to thank those of you who are good parents that have done great jobs with your kids. Because some of us have made mistakes and our children haven't been perfect. But never give up on a child, because you never know where that child's gonna go. A child today that can be in a gang and in drugs can someday become this very creative, great person. And I've seen it happen. And a lot of people criticize the L.A. Bridges and a lot of these other programs. I can give you children, I can show you kids that are going to college today for their masters that were part of those programs. Yes, we need accountability. The Jeopardy program with LAPD is probably one of the finest programs you'll have. The Yo program in Mr. Alarcon's district is absolutely one. All of you know where those programs are. So I thank you and I ask that the people really reach out into their hearts and take that money from their back pockets and save. The child you save today may be your own child or grandchild someday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carla Sanger. Good afternoon, and congratulations on the mural.
Thank you so much. Thank you, President Garcetti, members of council. I'm Carla Sanger, president and CEO of L.A.'s Best. And personally and professionally, for 40 years, I've been working in neighborhoods to reduce the tolerance for violence. This is the time where we have everything in place to do what it takes to be able to make a difference by accountability for value. I applaud everyone who spoke to you that said, "We need to know where funds are going. We need to know that programs like L.A.'s Best," and there are many, many high-quality programs in this city that have value and that can show and prove they have value. Yesterday, we had the good fortune to reveal a large 260-foot mural on a construction wall that surrounds the new detention center. The message of that wall was very, very clear: Do time at L.A.'s Best. The message of that wall was prevention, and I would add intervention. And prevention and intervention absolutely decrease detention. It's not to say that detention isn't critical to the city, because it's a three-fold approach. And we know that prevention and intervention and detention together. But look at the cost. Look at the cost of detention. Look at the cost of prevention. Look at the cost of intervention. And I had reporters ask me--
According to District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn, "We're finally ready to do what needs to be done to end gang violence." Ms. Hahn gives a short history of the proposed action and explains what the item will accomplish if passed.
And colleagues, today, we're gonna be asking for your support to once again to place a measure on this November's ballot to raise $30 million annually for gang prevention, after-school programs, job training programs. I have been so honored to work with Councilwomen Perry and Gruel to form Mothers Against Gang Violence and create a way that we can finally have a dedicated funding stream, as was recommended in the Advancement Project report, for programs that will keep our kids from joining gangs in the first place and then giving those who need it real job-training skills so they can have a life of productivity. As you'll remember, we've actually taken two votes on this measure. Both times, we had a unanimous vote here on the City Council to support placing this on a future ballot. You'll recall that we were gonna place this on the February ballot, and then, in the interest of Prop. S., we decided to delay this measure until November. And I was very proud when this council made it very clear that they supported this concept and wanted to place it on the November ballot. Over the past several months, we've made great progress in how we are fighting gang violence in Los Angeles. Progress that I think makes us better situated to put this measure on the ballot in November and gain the trust of the public. We've shown that we're finally ready to do what we need to do to end gang violence in Los Angeles. We're ready to invest in communities with the most needs. We know that a decrease in gang violence in the worst neighborhoods in Los Angeles will benefit all of Los Angeles. Several weeks ago, this council heard from about 40 people that convened here in City Council chambers during public comment to call on us to finally do something. We heard from parents who had lost children, and we heard from young people. We heard from concerned citizens, and we heard from service providers. And they all said the same thing. It's time for this City Council to do something to increase the funding on the front end of our children's lives for gang prevention, after-school, job training, programs that we know work, like we just heard from Carla Sanger, L.A.'s Best. And we know that when kids are in an after-school program, they do better in school. The crime around a school that has an after-school program goes down. And we know that these kids stay in school. We need an after-school program in every single school in the city of Los Angeles, in all of our communities. And we know that programs like the Gang Alternative Program, that go into the fourth grade and teach our kids how to not be recruited by a gang, give them the skills to say no to gangs. We know these programs work, but they need more funding. And we've heard from Chief Bratton, who said, "We cannot arrest our way out of this problem." And I think we all know that, because for every person we arrest in a relation to gang violence, there is another kid across town being pressured to join a gang for fear of his own safety. If we really want to win this war on gangs, we have to out-recruit the gang members. And we can only do that by providing before-school activities, after-school activities, job-training activities, so that we can really give people a way to be productive in this society.
This is a great solution, according to District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas, who reminds us of the cost of imprisoning our youth and why this tax is a bargain.
I'm very proud to say that my wife and I have been raising our children together now for 16 years. And we have a 15-year-old son and a 13-year-old son. And it's unfortunate that, in this great country, in this great city, that a father like myself would have to tell his son, who loves to ride a skateboard just a few blocks away to his friend's house, that I am not gonna let him do that. And I had this conversation with him about six months ago. He's now about 5'9". He is unfortunately the perfect profile for a drive-by shooting. He is not involved in gangs or what have you. But he happens to have brown skin and he lives in a blue-collar community in the San Fernando Valley. And that's enough to be a profile, to be shot at by somebody who says, "What gang are you a member of?" And no matter what the answer is from that innocent individual walking down the street or riding a skateboard, he's likely to be shot seconds later. It happens all too often in this city. And we've been trying hard over the last few decades to figure out how we can address this issue. But I'm here to remind all of you that we have ways in which we can address it. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Gangs, and I'd like to thank Janice Hahn for her leadership of sitting through hours and hours and hours of testimony and listening to departments and organizations and families and mothers about what it means to them for us to do what we need to do about this. And we have, in fact, made progress.
Acknowledging that these are difficult times and gang statistics continue to rise, District 2 Councilmember Wendy Gruel urges an eye vote and says, "Let's save lives in Los Angeles."
It does not matter where you live in the city of Los Angeles today. You are impacted by gang violence, whether it is in the San Fernando Valley, whether it is in San Pedro or Watts or East Los Angeles or Venice. Yes, West Side, Mr. Rosendahl, we know that the gang statistics continue to rise. And as someone who was lucky enough to work with Carla Sanger in the creation of L.A.'s Best, and as Ms. Hahn and I were talking about, she has the same passion she did 20 years ago on this issue, that prevention and intervention is a component of what we need to do to address gang violence. And when I met with Luisa Prudhomme, who came to see me, who lives in Sanlito Hanga, and when she sat there and cried about her son being killed through gang violence, and that she would do anything to bring her son back, and anything even more so to be able to stop that gang violence from happening and any mother having to go through what she had to go through, she was for it, whatever sacrifice it took. Because her son had the ultimate sacrifice, which was being killed in gang violence. And as Ms. Hahn mentioned, the importance of the chief of police and that he's indicated we can't arrest our way out of this. Yes, it is difficult times, and yes, I had some concerns initially, Ms. Hahn, when we started talking about this a few years ago, about how this money was gonna be spent and ensuring that the efforts, particularly of the controller, and that we had the reviews that were necessary to make sure the checks and balances were, and that we changed business as usual, that it was not the same programs before that may have been effective but had no demonstrative really reviews and transparency and benchmarking and accomplishments at the end. And if there's any, I think, ordinance or things that we voted on before, this is one of those that has a lot of checks and balances to ensure that the public understands that not only do we care about this issue because it is saving lives, but fiscally responsible programs, and that we are going to make sure that that occurs.
District 1 Councilmember Ed Reyes says this is an opportunity to make a difference in our city, and urges his colleagues to give the city a chance with a unanimous vote.
And I know for some of you, I sound like a broken record, because I keep talking about our housing needs, the violence, the deaths that have occurred in my district and throughout the city. But this is an opportunity where those individuals who don't have to live with this on a day-to-day basis can hopefully appreciate that now you are getting hit with tagging, you're getting hit with graffiti. Now imagine with these resources, these youngsters can have a place in which they can display their art, they can display their skills. They no longer have to hit your garage door, or your street signs, or your walls along your pristine gardens and greenways. Because now there's a place for them to go throughout the city. You know, Tony talks about his kids, and I appreciate what he's saying. My 12-year-old son, my 14-year-old son, my 17-year-old son, we live in northeast L.A. We live in areas where there's three or four gangs within a half-mile of our home. And we talk about, my wife and I, do they have their IDs on them? Do they have my business card on them? Because we don't know what's gonna happen that day or that night when they decide to ride their bike. Now, this is a personal discussion that happens every day in my house. But for many, many moms and dads, they can't have the discussion anymore because their kid is already gone. Their son and daughter is already gone. And we can make a difference with 10 cents a day. 10 cents a day. That's what we can do as a city.
Speaking about Augustine Contreras, a young man who was killed in his District 11, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl says this money is being spent the right way and maintains that intervention and prevention are more effective than suppression.
I will never forget, two years ago, I got a phone call that Augustine Contreras, a kid who was just turned 17 in Venice High School, was gunned down in the parking lot. I rushed to the scene and hugged the mother of Augustine Contreras. I never want to see another kid killed anywhere in this great city. These intervention and prevention programs are as much value to me as they are areas that the mayor has put into his gang-zoned areas. If we don't do intervention and prevention, we will have suppression. We will spend a dollar for every penny we spend now on getting kids out of trouble. I don't mind as a devil's workshop, we know that. We know that we need, after 2:00 in the afternoon until parents come home at night, opportunities for young people to grow, to educate themselves, to be involved. That intervention-prevention is more critical, frankly, in my opinion, than all the suppression strategies that just continue the problem. And this is what this is all about. And to dedicate this money, I want to dedicate it in memory of Augustine Contreras, so it never happens again.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 12 eyes. Thank you. And forthwith--
And with that, the tax to address gang violence through prevention and job-training programs will be placed on the November ballot for voter approval. And if approved by two-thirds of the voters, an annual fee of $36 would be placed on each parcel of property in the city, with discounts for low-income seniors. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of City Council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending July 11, 2008. On behalf of Cameron Keys and everyone here on Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
My name is Jacques Kay, and I'm a community activist, and I have a goal in my life to try to make the city a better city every day. I'm also involved in a lot of community events, but recently, inside our trophy shop, we put in a nine-hole miniature golf course, complete with palm trees, sand traps, and water holes. And we held a miniature golf contest for local high school down the street called Miller High School, in which all 240 of the students in the school have a disability. And we raised over $8,000 having a miniature golf contest for the school. My family was fortunate enough 12 years ago to start the first camp for Jewish children with disabilities. The name of the camp is Camp Chesed. Chesed in Hebrew means loving kindness. And for two weeks out of the year, we take about 40 kids and their families to Disneyland, Universal Studios, the whole gambit for two weeks. It's absolutely free. We provide two to three counselors per child, and we take no money at all from the families and spend the whole year fundraising for the camp. I'm fortunate enough to live in a city which has beautiful climate, it's large enough that you can do anything you want on a certain day, go to the beach, go to the mountains, et cetera. And yet, it still has a sense of community where you live. My name is Jacques Kay, and I'm a face of L.A.
Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 15, 2008. We are here in the John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We are also in Van Nuys at the beginning of each month on Fridays. We try to get out there to bring City Council closer to all Angelinos. I want to thank the City Council members who are here pursuing to council rules on time. Council members Alarcon, Han, Labange, Rosendahl, and Zine. Mr. Smith and Mr. Weiss are excused today. That means we are waiting still. Mr. Cardenas and Ms. Gruel, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Wesson. All of those council members are now presently late if they will make their way down as soon as possible so we can begin our meeting in a timely fashion. Our agendas are available online at lacity.org, here in council chambers, or through the city clerk's office. Those are made public 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special agenda items. I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, and those who have joined us here in council chambers, or in our Van Nuys council chambers. We appreciate your attendance and your watching. We broadcast live on Channel 35 each council meeting, and we are rebroadcast in the evening on tape. We're also available online at lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information on your elected officials, city departments, and various ways to improve the quality of your life in Los Angeles. But equally importantly, you can catch our council meetings on the Internet. If you click on the link on the left side of the page at lacity.org, you can watch any of the council meetings, and also go back to archived footage of past council meetings. Finally, your telephone is also a tool for democracy, and you can call in using Council Phone, which is a service of the city, at 213-621-CITY, and listen not only to our council meetings live, but any of our committee meetings as well. All items that we discuss on today's agenda fit into two categories: either items that have already had a public hearing in committee, which requires a reopening to hear any cards from the public, and items which have not yet received a public hearing. Those are automatically triggered by a card from the public for a public hearing, and if you'd like to be heard on those items, please fill out a speaker card in the back, hand it to one of the sergeants at arms on either side of the aisles here, and we'll be sure to hear your testimony. If you're out in Van Nuys, there are cards available there, too, to give to staff and to let us know, and we can listen to you remotely and watch you on Channel 35 from our Van Nuys City Hall facility. We are still awaiting a quorum. Thank you again to council members Alarcon, Ms. Gruel now, Ms. Han, Mr. Labange, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine. We are still awaiting two more members, and the following members are late: Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Perry, and Councilmember Reyes. Those five members, we are awaiting a quorum. One last reiteration, that's Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Perry, and Councilmember Reyes. If you'll please join us as soon as possible, we will begin the meeting. In the meantime, thank you all for your patience, and we shall begin shortly. We have a quorum now, so thank you very much. And with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, wait, we had it for a moment. We're still awaiting one more council member: Mr. Weezer, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes. I know Ms. Perry is still upstairs finishing the meeting energy and environment. We're still awaiting Mr. Weezer, Mr. Parks, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Reyes. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, seeing none, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, we are beginning the meeting at official business, so if we can go to first order of business, Mr. Clerk.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Han moves, Mr. Weezer seconds without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Labange seconds without objection. Those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute for today.
All right. Ms. Gruel, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our salute to the flag. Thank you.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next order of business, please. Yes, if we can run through the agenda, please.
Items 1 through 3 are street lighting, district ordinances, notice for public hearing. Council should have 12 members. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold those on the desk till we have 12th member. Next items, please.
Items 4 through 7 are confirmation of assessments for sidewalk maintenance districts in Council Districts 4, 5, and 6.
Okay, we do not have any cards on those. We'll open and close the public hearings. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 8 through 10 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. The Bureau of Street Lighting is requesting that those matters be received and filed.
Okay, without objection, we'll receive and file those. 8 through 10. If we can take up 1 through 3 again, we have Mr. Reyes here. As ordinances, we now have 12 members, so let's go ahead. Anybody wishing to call 1, or 2, or 3 special? Seeing none, let's go ahead, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 11 through 16 are building and safety liens, notice for public hearing, and the department reports that items 14 and 16 may be received and filed inasmuch as the lien has been paid, and there is a request to continue item 13 to July 29.
Okay, no objection to continuing 13 to the 29th of July. So ordered. No objection to receiving and filing 14 and 16. So ordered as well. We do have a card on 11. Let's call that special. The other items, if nobody wishes to call them special, we'll open and close the public hearings, and please prepare the roll, I think on 12 and 15, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 17 is a public convenience necessity item in Council District 13, notice for public hearing, and the recommendation is to grant the application.
Okay, we do not have any cards. I will open and close the public hearing, and I will move the recommendation. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. 18 and 19, we'll call special for cards from the public, and if we can go to the next items.
Items 20 through 37 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 20 through 37 special? Mr. Cardenas. 20 for Mr. Cardenas. Are there specials, colleagues? It's 21 through 37. Colleagues, any specials going once? This is 21 through 37, going twice. Seeing none, let's prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 38 through 53 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. Items 38 and 39 are commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold those on the desk. We do have a card also in for 39, which we'll take note of. We have a card also for 42 and 52, so we'll call those special for cards from the public. We'll open and close the other public hearings. Are there specials, colleagues? That leaves us 40 through 63, sorry, 53, 40 through 53. If there are no specials, let's go ahead and open and close the public hearings, and prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. We'll come back to public comment now, and we'll begin our public comment out in Van Nuys. And Donna Perman is our first speaker. Very good morning to you.
Good morning. Okay, let's see. Is Councilwoman Smith ever coming back? I hope so. The City Council is such a joke. Daily News did a satire on you, passing a resolution against too much sunshine. Even had Councilmember Janice Han having another parcel tax. I wonder when I missed that. I took it seriously. It made me mad because you passed silly resolutions. Sound like something you would do, but you really do is much worse. The goal line fiasco stopping the work so you can calm people passing a sales tax increase. Councilmember Han, parcel tax for gangs. Three of you council members stayed away on purpose so would pass unopposed. Putting this on all on the property owners. Believe me, your property taxes go sky-high. People won't be able to live here. This will probably be the tip of the iceberg. As for transportation, aren't we already funding that in several ways? Don't start Subway to the Sea. You probably won't have the money for that either. In the meantime, you let the CRA use our tax increment money for big lavish projects like Grand Avenue, making us that we don't have the money to take care of gangs, our schools, our street repairs, and much more. Please, people, don't vote for that parcel tax. Sure, we want to stop kids from joining gangs. It's like saying we want world peace. It won't happen that way. It won't be used properly. It never is. They want to tax the people to death with fees, parcel taxes, Prop S, probability fees, every way they can find. And while the city gets less and the city council gets more, Prop R and H benefited them. We must stand up and fight City Hall and CRF from stealing our money from the general fund. They're destroying our city while smiling and looking like they care. And don't get fooled. We need to run the city. They're supposed to serve us, not the other way around. And lastly, I want to say, God bless the CRA, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her to the night from the light from above. From the mountains, we'll level it to the prairies. We'll build oceans, harness it wide with foam. God bless the CRA, my home. Sweet, we'll lose it to eminent domain, home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. The sonorous tones of Donna Perman. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker here, and after that will be Zuma Dog. Mr. Johnson?
My name is Oscar Johnson. I'm active at the Commissary of Los Angeles, and I was very interested about the mayor of Los Angeles, how he is electing Los Angeles. The mayor have forgotten about Los Angeles. Our streets need maintenance. The MTA buses are very unprotected. It's very dangerous to ride on at night, and seem as though the MTA operation is an operation of fraud and corrupt entity. They only use MTA for their own purposes and many occasions. In our police department, I'd like to speak against the police abuse and our sheriff abuse, and as African-American victim and assistant of law enforcement among Afro-American people. It's very unsupervised, and very much unprofessional, that we have a government that's supposed to represent us, that we don't have any type of communication with, and we have peoples, not of us, riding around our community at night. Seem right, they are terrorizing us. Seem right, we are just pray for victims. We are predators. We are pray for the predators at night, in the end of daytime. It seem as the predators, as the police department, the sheriff's department, and the MTA, and the government official, and corruption in government, and stop the eight mile rail that built from exposition to West LA. We shouldn't spend that money and another, those resources in another direction, and clean up drugs on the streets of Los Angeles. And as we tried to say, clean the drugs up on the streets of Los Angeles, we shut down all liquor stores in Los Angeles, because liquor is drugs also, but liquor is legalized drugs, and you find teenagers buying drugs, and the liquor is taking down the plight of our community, and causing so much harm and drunk driving. And we also try to mend better education, find a better education. Half of the students in the ninth grade would not finish high school in this nation. We in a country of crisis. It seem as though we really neglecting the crisis, but whenever we get ready to try to do something about it, the problem be for the ones that be coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. After that is Armando Herman.
Yes, yes, and I must personally, oh, I'm not allowed to personally thank, but if I could tell council, I'm very thankful. Councilmember Bill Rosendahl, constituent service at its finest. I had problems at Venice on Sunday with the LAPD, Peggy Thuesing again, and I left a message with Bill Rosendahl on Sunday. I was in his office Monday morning, 11 o'clock, special emergency meeting with Zuma Dog, because he had a meltdown on Sunday on his voicemails, and Bill really sat down, and he got on the phone, and I shouldn't even say the things. He helped move mountains, y'all, and so he listened, and so after two years, that was definitely my finest moment. I even called my mom and said, what more can a constituent ask for, y'all? So thank you so much for that. Also, hey, I really made it, y'all. Zuma Dog in his first appearance in a David Zandt Heiser LA Times article, y'all. Ha ha, he mentioned me, not you, and it says right here, there was a crowd. Thank you, Deron K., by the way, former editor of Daily News. We had a rally downtown at City Hall, about 200, 300 people, all the bloggers, all the friends of Zuma Dog. I saw the Jamil Shaw Sr. and his wife. We had a great time, a lot of people, real community spirit. I felt great after this meeting. Thank you, Deron K., for organizing it, and it says here, Monday's festival. It was an atmosphere a little bit like L.A. Palooza, with perennial City Hawk gadfly, Zuma Dog in a sombrero. Yeah, and he didn't mention you guys. Ha ha. So let me thank you, and I also like to say, with 250 people there yesterday, it just reminded me how great it would be if everybody would come here one day at City Hall and show up for public comment. And for everybody watching, I've been here, I have not missed a quorum in over three months. I was in Cleveland visiting family. I haven't missed a quorum in three months since the return, and I wish some council members would try to achieve that as well. And please, people watching, we need you to show up here at City Hall. If you show up and start protesting about the things we blog about, they'll start listening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. Like the hat. Mr. Armando Herman is our next speaker. After that, we'll go back out to Van Nuys, and Rick Nightengale. Good morning, Ms. Herman.
Good morning, council members. Today's dramatic and demographic change has created a burden upon the city of Los Angeles. No city cannot adequately plan for such a burden. What burden are you talking about, Mr. Herman? I'm talking about the burden of illegal immigrants that has led to higher crime, contributing to overcrowding, not just in our neighborhoods, but within our city physical budget. What about our failing schools, overcrowded schools? What has any one of you done to step up with the mayor, the mayor who paraded about this, making schools better for our children? They are not any better than they were before. They're worse. These hardships have had a great substantial standard of pain to the community. I ask council members to get together and bring the mayor back to do his job, and build the city the way it should be built, with taxpayers' dollars, not padding people's pockets and budgets. The bottom line is this: When does the city department and local government step up and have a play role in today's illegal immigrant problem? No city cannot adequately plan. No city cannot adequately deal with it. So what is Los Angeles doing about it? Our services and the departments of public works really gone bad to worse? And all I ask is that these departments take accountability, be responsible, to remove blight. CRA is just loving the blight. They are part of the blight within the city of Los Angeles. This overcrowding of development, this overcrowding of revitalization of Los Angeles is horrible. So, as Bush said this morning, let's stop the tax, and let's stop the mayor from taxing the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Nightengale is our last speaker for public comment, also in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Nightengale.
Good morning, Rick Nightengale. This is, this, by the time, it's kind of like on respect, and to the public. I don't understand. I mean, you people turn around, and you want respect. Everybody likes to have respect, but you don't give the respect to the public whatsoever. I mean, you lie, you cheat, you underhand people. So how can you turn around and do, ask for respect? I mean, you're not honest with the people for what the things that you do. You lied, like the tax regarding the trash. Granted, it was for the cops, but it was for other things, not all the back wages and so forth. Regarding like the crime, everybody wants crime taken care of, but every time you say, oh, we can't do it because we got to put another bond measure on because there's not enough money. You people are like the, like a little kid. Remember when you're in the store, and your parents say, oh, God, I don't have no more money. He says, well, mommy, you got a whole checkbook. Why can't you just write another check? That's what you do, but guess what? She says there's no money in the bank. So why can't do that? But you're sure people can. It don't make any sense that you just keep spending money that you don't have. You could see the writing on the wall regarding what was going to happen, regarding the land and the property tax that was going to cease, but you keep spending it. You do not believe that there is a money crunch. I firmly believe in my heart. You think it's all going to go away, and things are going to go back the way they were. They're not. It's going to get worse. It's just this: You don't spend $14 million on a fountain. You don't spend the money that all your people, your, on your people are spending on cars. Be like they do on the other, like when I worked for the school board. We got an allowance for our cars to drive. They deserve to drive their own cars. Maybe you desire a Durbin car because of, in your contract, but they don't. There's some way that you have to cut back, and I'm going to be serious about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightengale. That is the end of our public comment. If we can take up the commissioners first. Item number 38 first.
Item 38 is the reappointment of Mr. Herbert Seguenza to the Ojupolo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority.
Thank you. If we can ask the nominee to come forward, to join us at the table here.
Good morning.
Very good morning. I'd like to recognize this came through Arts Parks, Health and Aging. Mr. Labange is over there, on the right wing today instead of the left wing.
I know, I moved around a little bit, visited on this side. We have someone here who has passion, and I think a concept and an idea that could make our birthplace of Los Angeles even better. If we would just take a moment to hear from the commission designee for this, and explain your passion, I'm sure you'll all be happy to unanimously vote for approval. This is reappointment.
Well, thank you very much. As you know, I was appointed four years ago. I'm a member of Culture Clash, and very involved in the arts. That's my passion, the arts, and that's what I, I joined the commission to, I rolled up my sleeves to bring, bring culture down to Overe Street. That was my main goal, but once I was there, I saw that there was other problems, and I kept rolling my sleeves even more. And I think in the four years that I've been there, I think we've progressed a lot. We've, there's been, you know, it's had its history, turbulent history, but I think we now are in a great position to make changes. I'm very happy about the, very excited about the Ciceros mural conservation that we have with the Getty. That's a $9 million project that's on its way. We have, we have a lot of new businesses and concepts that are coming to Overe Street that will create a nightlife and a cultural center, and bring, bring the birthplace, make it a place, a place to be, a place to be for people to come from all over the world and enjoy what we have. I've been traveling, I took a travel to Towels, to New Mexico, Albuquerque, and places like that, and I see how much more advanced they are as far as their cultural and historical centers, and I, and they do, it's a coordinated effort between the city, the community, private investment, and I think that's what we need to do at Overe Street to bring it up to par to those type of historical places.
Well, certainly, and as a commissioner, as an artist, you've seen the world in the sense of, the people will come to Overe Street, but let's make their experience even greater so they understand what Los Angeles is and how it came. I'm pleased the county is finally acting on the north side, west side, next to the church, and more activity that should be there. So absolutely ask for unanimous vote, and I know a few other members will ask questions possibly about the rent and the, but the work that you've done in the done in the four years, the work you've done to enhance the gateway from Union Station, the work you've done to enhance the gateway at Cesar Chavez and Alameda, the complimentary work, and I want to give Mr. Reyes a great compliment, too. Up the street, just a, a, a long throw away is the beautiful new square across from Felipe's that has set a tone. So, we're starting to set a tone there. We just want to make sure that people get their experience worth it, the value, because as you go to towns, and I just came from towns, where you go to a place, you experience something, you wonder, is it, are we cheating the people coming to Alvera Street by not giving them the Class A type of experience? The only thing I'd like to really see next to the Chinese American Museum is Yang Chow have a little bit of a, a, a little place there, get diversity of food and fill the buildings. Unanimous vote requested through the city clerk, voting clerk number one, and I want to make that come up. But, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a very long list of fans or potential enemies. We'll find out. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. For the record, I'm a fan, but first want to thank you. It's great to see you at the McArthur Park Concert Series, the opening night, and it just shows your spirit for the city as a whole. And to have you anchored down in Alvera Street, I think is a very strategic place for you to be able to share some of your wealth in terms of your knowledge, your insight, and your passion for the art, as I've stated. But are we, as, are we able to view you as commissioners in a way in which we start talking about a partnership with the county as they do their improvements across the street? As Councilman Labange just stated, we did the pocket park about a block away across from Felipe's, but this notion of creating a greater sense of place, not just an alleyway or a corridor or a little street, I mean, however you want to define that, do you see us working in that direction? Is there a dialogue amongst commissioners? Or to see a dialogue like that beginning to, to emerge?
I think there is a dialogue emerging. I think there's got to be more coordinated effort between county, city, private investments, so that we become part of the general plan, you know, that, that, it seems like we're not coordinating enough as far as county has a general plan, the city might have other ideas, and so I think we need to all sit down and, and figure out how to bring Alvera Street up to, up to par to all these plans.
You know, as you look at Fort Moore, which is the highest elevation, and you make your way east, you have Broadway, then you have the other streets, and you have Alvera Street. You actually have a set of stages that should be connected for pedestrian use. You see the elderly who are going to Alvera Street, the Placita Church, taking their life in their hands as they cross that street. There's some basic enhancements that we really should ponder in terms of looking at the county's investment, looking at the city's investment, and have that, that dialogue, and is that something that would come from the commission? Or is that something that we should stimulate? I mean, my district goes right up to Cesar Chavez and just north of Broadway.
I think you're right. I think we do need bolder, bolder plans, civic plans that, that connect, like you say, the fort with Alvera Street, Alvera Street with the corridor, City Hall, you know, these are all strategic places, and, and other cities have been able to connect these either through transportation, through walkways. In Boston, for example, you have the historical, you know, trail, you know, and we don't have that, you know, we can connect the, the cornfields, for example, with us, so there's a walkway, and I know you're very involved with the River Walk, and I think that's, that's going to be a strategic, you know, plan that will, has to connect. It always has to connect with Alvera Street, I believe, because of, because we are the birthplace.
You have a strong skeleton in the Angels Walk. The Angels Walk, they have some historic accounts of what happened on that section, and that happened about 10 years ago, eight years ago, and this historic walk, Angels Walk, kind of, it had some momentum, and then it just kind of faded away. We did the Chinatown Gateway. The Chinatown Gateway in and of itself became a landmark, but imagine if this could become the entryway into the east side, into northeast, into Chinatown, and the gateway into the central part. There'd be a different sense of, of, I think, pride, I mean, it would celebrate that history because this is the founding area of our great city. So, I share these thoughts with you. You know, I chair Planning, Land Use and Management. I believe our council colleagues, Councilman Perry, and, and Weezer, and myself, all have a strong interest in seeing that area continue to emerge, and we would hope that perhaps we can hear a dialogue from the commissioners in that regard.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with your, with your council district on this.
Thank you for all your energy and everything you contribute to the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Herbert, how are you today?
Hello there, the councilman 14, the mighty 14. I just want to thank you, first of all, councilmen, for all the, the support you have lent me personally in, in believing that I could do this job, first of all, and, and now I'm president, and you've been giving me a lot of support and guidance, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much, and I really enjoyed working with you, and I know a lot of us look at you and we think comedy, we think funny because of the work you do with Culture Clash, and, but I just want to commend you for the seriousness for which you've taken this job, and as I talk to you and the work you've done there, it's incredible how far we've come these last few years to really improve Alvera Street. Robert, our general manager, could attest to that, whether it's the parking structure, the fees that we needed to correct, moving forward with Ciceros, and a number of other projects in the area that you, under your leadership as president of that commission, we've come a very long way, and your enthusiasm really shows. Every time I talk to you about it, I, you're really enthusiastic about not only recognizing the importance of the birthplace of the city of Los Angeles, but also promoting the arts through this great place we have here in smack down in the middle of Los Angeles. So, I want to commend you for that, and, and thank you as well, because I think you've gone beyond the call of duty. We recently acquired some art that was gonna be disposed after a very successful exhibition down south from us, and we were able to acquire that, to bring it to Alvera Street, to continue to show Latino art here in Alvera Street, and that additional support you've been giving goes a long way, because although we've been doing a lot of work for Alvera Street, there's a lot more potential, and part of that is bringing these types of exhibits, art exhibits, to Alvera Street, and people want to see that. People want to be able to come to a place and see these types of exhibits that talk about people's culture and history here in the city of Los Angeles. You've been a strong supporter of that, and I couldn't have asked for a better partner to continue to move together. I think we have a great team here to continue to do better for Alvera Street. We have a lot more work to do. It's moving forward with the Italian Hall. We acquired some funding to finally move forward on that. You've been very supportive of that, coming here to testify, and a number of other projects that we're gonna move forward to fully embrace the diversity of what is Los Angeles by recognizing different pieces of that at Alvera Street. So, thank you for your leadership. I look forward to your next play. I look forward to following wherever you go, and I'm very proud of what you do for us here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Councilmember Weezer, was he the most qualified or is he the only one willing to take the job? Anyway, that makes you qualified. You're there or you don't know what you're doing. I, I say that tongue in cheek because I was actually on this commission, and I commend you for all the time and energy it takes. It's a very important place. It's a historical place. It's the birthplace of Los Angeles, and yet at the same time, it's a very tumultuous place, unfortunately, but maybe it's because it is so important. But I just want to thank you for your years of service in the past. There's a colleague of yours who were here, was here the other day, so I think it's only appropriate that I ask you some of the same questions I asked him. Have you ever masqueraded as a bear?
No, not yet.
Yes or no answer, sir?
It's a no, it's a no.
No, no, okay, all right. Have you ever masqueraded as a masked man wielding a sword?
That I have, yes.
That you have, and you proudly, I mean, you say it with confidence.
At El Pueblo, at El Pueblo, specifically.
Oh, there, specific there. Anyway, I ask you those questions because I know you to be a very talented actor and someone who's very, very busy, and I just want to let the people of Los Angeles know that we have some very quality individuals who are actually donating their time. You're donating your time on this commission, right? You're not getting paid for it.
Absolutely.
Maybe some donuts now and then or something, but that, that's about it.
Not even that.
No, no paychecks. You're donating your time. Your time is extremely valuable, and congratulations. It was last year that your comedy troupe, Culture Clash, celebrated 25 years?
Well, 25 this May coming.
Oh, this May coming, wow. Excellent. So, you started like when you were in kindergarten?
Exactly, yeah, ten, yeah.
Figured that.
Six months old.
Well, the reason why I say that is because I know that you've done some tremendous work and very wonderful work, not only that is entertaining, but actually challenges us politically, asks a lot of questions that maybe aren't, that we don't come across when it comes to the plays that you've written and the plays that you've been around. Are you working on any particular project, like on Team Plus or something like that?
Yes, we have two world premieres coming up next year here in Los Angeles, one at the Getty Villa. We're going to adapt a Greek play, comedy, and we're going to be once again at the Mark Taper Forum when it reopens, and that'll be our fourth time there at the Mark Taper Forum. There's never been another group, especially a Latino group, that's ever been able to do that, so we're very proud of that, yes.
And what's the name of your group?
Culture Clash.
Culture Clash. I mean, I know what it is, but not everybody else does. And where, did, did you start here in Los Angeles, or where did you start?
No, we started in 1984 in San Francisco's Mission District, and I moved here in 1990, and I've been a resident of Los Angeles since then, primarily Silver Lake area, Tom Labange's area, then, then I'm now a resident down here downtown.
Well, once again, thank you very much. We know you to be a very talented individual and a very giving individual, so thank you for all the time you donate.
Thank you for all your support.
Rosendahl is our next speaker. Mr. Rosendahl.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm fascinated by the conversation. I was asking Ed a little bit more about you, the DWP thing that you've done, the Culture Class that you've done, the Chavez Ravine. I know the Chavez Ravine, the history of that story, but you're a producer, and, and you're an artist, and, and you're a cultural, a great guy, and you bring energy to things, and I appreciate that very much, because you not only write the history through art, but you share that with a larger community, and people can appreciate it. I, I thought the, the Dodger Stadium thing was very controversial, but my heart went out to exactly what you were saying there, so hats off to you on your, on what you've done for us. But here's the sticky wicket, market rate leases. Now, some people say we can never go market rate leases because it goes back to the, to the reality of, we don't get enough tourists there, we don't get enough this there, we have to be supportive, and it is the birthplace of Los Angeles. Then other people say to me, "Councilmen, everybody should be paying market rate for everything, city subsidizing this place, helping certain things happen." I really want to do the right thing on that issue. I'd like your understanding about market rate and, and leases and the day and age we live in.
You know, I think it's a give and take. I think the expectations have been low. In other words, the leases have been low, the rents have been low, and also our, our infrastructure, you know. I think if we, if we're gonna charge market rates, which I think we should, we could, I think then the city has to, has to pony up and also fix the infrastructure. There's a lot of us, there's many, many buildings there that need, that need repair. I know we're repairing the, the, the puestos right now, but beyond that, I think there's, there's just so much more that the city has to pony up and, and contribute to El Pueblo to bring it up to market values. I don't think we can charge market values unless people feel like they're getting something back from the city as well.
Sounds right. What would you specifically think the city needs to pony up and do? I'd love to get.
Well, just the basic infrastructure. There's a lot of historical buildings there, like Italian Hall, like.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
I mean, that's, it's, it's, there's, we have many buildings there that are unoccupied, you know, they're not being used to the fullest. There's buildings there that could be renovated right now and get leased out and bring money for the city. So, you know, there's, we're just, we're not using, we're not using every square inch of Alvera Street to its fullest, and I think we, there's, there's tons of potential, tons of potential. We need a partnership maybe with, with commercial people, with the county, and, and create a synergy, a synergy that brings more and more people down to Alvera Street, a higher quality tourist, a tourist that can spend more money, and then I think everybody, then people can start paying market rates because they'll be getting much more income as well, and much more traffic.
Sounds right to me. Could you, could we ask you to let us know, we're the city council here, what specifically we should push for? I'm on the Budget Committee, and every year when the Budget Committee comes up, everybody's wringing their hands, and then they don't know what to do. I would like very much to be one of your great supporters on reinvesting in that infrastructure, so that we can go to market rate and, and have the integrity to, to appreciate all that, because what you've been is a pied piper of culturism. You've brought energy around that place that only you have been able to do. I watch my Latino colleagues totally have history with you and relationships with you, and obviously you've made a huge impact for all of us. So.
Yeah, the arts, the arts and culture are always first in my heart, and, and I want that to be a cultural center. Alvera Street is not known for that yet, you know, and it should be, you know, it should be. We have the oldest, oldest theater in Los Angeles is there, the Merced Theater, you know, the oldest adobe, the oldest hotel. So, these are things that people don't know about, and we, we need to, need to reinvent, reinvent Alvera Street and for the new generation, so that people come down. We have a budgets, a Budget Committee. We will discuss this. I, I couldn't tell you at this point what
Sure.
specifics I would want for, you know, where I would want the city to help us, but along here with General Manager Andrade and the committee, we will talk about what, what would be our priorities, what would, what would be the things that we would ask you for.
Great. I would look forward to that. Your general manager's been very clear with us in the budget process of where things are, what leadership we can provide to see that that happens, we want to provide, and thank you again for stepping up, for being such a great civic spirited.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
Herbert, it's been a pleasure to watch you on stage, get involved in, in the controversies and the conflict and all the culture clashes that you portrayed on stage, and you ain't seen nothing yet until you go onto this commission. The, the reality is that, that now we're standing some tremendous improvements to the infrastructure in the areas around Alvera Street. It essentially is the same as it was when I was baptized there 54 years ago across the street, and I, I really think that, that there's a greater opportunity to be had, and we need somebody to be able to pull warring parties together to, to not only see beyond their interests, but to have a vision that incorporates their interests in a way that benefits them, at the same time benefits all the people of Los Angeles, to really reflect a, a merchant center that was the birthplace of, of Los Angeles in a way that, 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 that sort of addresses the, the modern issues. And so, I'm very excited about your appointment. Your commitment to downtown is evidenced by your residence here, but more importantly, the work that you, you do, I think, even in, in its artistic and dramatic sense, is absolutely the kind of, of, it brings together the kinds of elements that we need to see at calle Olvera, because it does recognize that there, there, that there are conflict and it must be resolved, and hopefully we can, we can come to a better understanding. I know your history. I know your commitment to the movimiento, but really social justice. I know your commitment to Los Angeles. I don't need to have a whole lot of testimony to say yes to your, your vote. In fact, I appreciate you and Richard. I'm waiting for the third one to come up before us soon, and we can get everybody fully employed for the city of Los Angeles, that is. But congratulations on your career. I understand you're even looking at, at a movie production. I'm, I'm excited about that because I think it's a very important statement that needs to be made. But for now, thank you so much for your commitment to the city of Los Angeles, and, and let's, let's make calle Olvera a place that we all can respect and admire and visit on a regular basis and be excited about.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That was our last speaker. Anybody else wishing to give their good comments? I want to congratulate you and thank you for your service and many different hats, and you obviously have just friends here on the city council, so we will make this official, and please prepare the roll on the nomination and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And a round of applause for our commissioner. Thank you very much for your service.
They like me. They really like me.
They do, and we will continue to. So, on that one, we will now take up the second commissioner, which is item 39.
And that is the reappointment of Mr. Alan Scobin to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Mr. Scob, yes.
Police Department, can we forthwith 35 and 47, please?
Okay, without objection.
Thank you.
And why don't we take the two speaker cards first on this, Zuma Dog on item 39, and then Mr. Herman. Go ahead, Zuma Dog.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, hopefully reappointed commissioner. My name's Zuma Dog. You might want to find out about me in the LA Times, California, section, page three. I'm a gadfly, and I'll be placing my name on the ballot. I'm a gadfly and I'll be placing my name on the ballot for mayor, so hopefully we'll be working with each other.
Please.
And here's, okay, here's what I think's important in a commissioner that I hope city council will be working with you on. First of all, the medical marijuana patients of Los Angeles would like to say that the police commissioner, please, again, I'd like to say the medical marijuana patients say that there needs to be training with LAPD because there's Prop 215 now and what happens a lot of ti- excuse me, Dion, oh my gosh, please hold my time.
Mr. Dogg, you're addressing the council right now.
Yeah, well, you know what? The city attorney's addressing the commissioner while I'm addressing the commissioner.
There's a second warning, please don't disrupt the meeting. If you'll please continue your comments to the council directly. Thank you.
Okay, and just remember, dumb a-hole is protected speech. All right, so what I'd like to say is medical marijuana patients would like the LAPD to be trained because there's Prop 215, medical marijuana is being confiscated against state-approved law. And so once again, you think that when there's a new law passed, that they have a big convention at Staples Center with all 10,000 LAPD, but that's not the case, there's no company memo. So just in general with LAPD, there needs to be training because new rules and laws are being passed all the time, and especially regarding Prop 215 medical marijuana. Also, I'd like some common sense enforcement added, especially at Venice Beach, when you have tickets being written for mic stands being too tall, Hannah Montana displays, all kind of whatnot. And so I think we need some common sense put into that. You cannot mandate, you know, you cannot mandate to do the right thing, okay? You got to just have common sense. It all starts from the top. And also I say with all the diversity, there's a lot of diversity training that has divisiveness. I say treat all people the same and then you won't have a problem.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Armando Herman.
Mr. Vera Gosa, once again, you are absent. And in your absence, we're here to speak about Mr. Alan Scobin. We're here to see if there is a reappointment. I know Mr. Scobin from some time past, and I would say he's a fair guy, but there are some problems within LAPD, there's some problems within the commissioners. And I can't really point them out now. I'm sure those of you who have come across an experience, whether it was negative or positive, you would know exactly what I'm talking about. I hope that council members will really consider what a commissioner's duties are, will take into the definition what a commissioner's job of performance should be. Is it generally for himself or is it for the public? Because lately and in the past, the media has criticized LAPD, and I think now it's time for a commissioner to step up and be strong and be determined to see that changes take place that don't prolong the system, that do not make timelines go on forever and ever and ever, such as the same things that go on here at City Hall. They procrastinate. I'm sure that this reappointment of a commissioner, whether it's the reappointment again or not, be determined again on ability, responsibility, and accountability. And so I wish you luck, and then again, I say, Mayor Vigoza, come back to Los Angeles and please do your job. Please help us make a good determination of what a commissioner is and what he should be and what he should be doing at his job. Thank you.
That'll close our public comments on this item. If we can invite the commissioner back to the table. And like to first recognize Ms. Grue.
Thank you very much, and I wanted to stand in support of Alan Scobin. He has been a commissioner not only for this last three years, like three years, but two prior to the, in the previous mayor. And Alan has done a great job of representing the San Fernando Valley as the appointment there. And Alan is not one of those that just goes to the commission meetings. He goes out and sees what's happening, not only because he's a reserve sheriff, right, but more importantly, because he goes in those communities he thinks are critically important. And I think I particularly valued your assistance when we created the Office of Public Safety and your willingness to see that through and serve on that committee that is really ensuring public input and coordination between the various departments. And as we look at the gang issue going forward and Ms. Hahn's efforts and the rest of ours to combine and coordinate intervention, prevention, and enforcement, I think the role of the commission is critically important to ensure that, you know, you help the glue get that all together. And I think the placing it in the mayor's office and having that responsibility there and accountability is going to be a great way as we go forward. But I think the commission's role is really to let us know where there are challenges and other issues facing the police commission. So I want to stand up in support of your reappointment. You've been a great commissioner for this five years, have the history, have the experience, and you care, and that's a really important part of it. And I think the care part is even better than anything else because you are willing to listen. So I don't know if you have anything you'd like to say, which says what, you know, where you see the department going and the commission's role in the next several years.
I still, unfortunately, something that I felt was very important five years ago is still very important, that's to put the consent decree behind us. That is something that's absolutely vital, and I believe that the department's been doing a good job of that. Another area that I'd like to seek greater focus is in the forensic sciences. I can cite many examples where we've been able to maximize our human resources, our people, by providing them with forensic capabilities, whether it be firearms, blood, fingerprints in other areas. And then finally, for me, I have a strong passion for being sure that we provide the best possible equipment for our people so that when they do their jobs, they will do it as safely as possible and effectively as possible.
Great. Well, thank you. And I think with the DNA backlog, and it's something myself and Jack Weiss are particularly interested in, in those rape kits that we have so many, and we're making slow progress, we want to see it go even more quickly. But I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve and look forward to working with you on these issues in the next several years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Grue. We have Mr. Weisar, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Laban, Mr. Zion, and Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weisar.
Mr. Scobin, am I up, Mr. President? Yes, was I next?
Yes, you were.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scobin, thank you for your service on this commission, and arguably it's one of the busiest commissions of all, given the amount of work and the intensity of the work involved. And I want to commend you for the work you do there. I think you provided a rational voice, given the many difficult issues you have to deal with there, and I know they're not easy because oftentimes a lot of passion, emotion is involved in the types of issues you need to decide. And I think you provided a very rational voice to make sure that we continue to make public safety a priority for the city, but at the same time, ensure that residents and our constituents are heard and are given a time to voice their concerns. So I want to thank you for that. There's a number of issues that I wanted to raise you just to get your thought on them, but I've seen you in action there. You've reached out to council members and constituents when you've known they've had issues, and I really appreciate that. But I think that you're a voice on there that's needed for the residents of the city of Los Angeles. So I really, I know we've talked on sidebars on issue, and I'll raise these issues then because I know that you've been a very active member here, and if people watch those commissions, they'll see that and they'll know where you're coming from and the work you've done to make this city safer. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you doing today?
I think well, and I will know more so in a little while.
Very good, very good, very good. Are you comfortable we're going to reach our goal of 10,000 men and women in uniform?
I am because I see a laser focus on that goal. So I believe that the commitment's there at every level to reach that. I believe we'll reach that. And the secondary focus, as I believe I mentioned earlier, to be sure we have proper equipment and resources to support those 10,000 officers.
Good. So we're on track. I mean, I've been a big supporter of getting to 10,000. You know my district, the 11th district, because violent crime takes precedent over other crime, and rightly so. I don't have enough officers for all of my areas. We do in the summer get support for Venice Beach, which we're very grateful for, but there's been a series of home burglaries, seniors who leave a window open, both my district and Jack Weiss's district, and we've been both very focused on that issue. Our concern is how do we keep presence in the 11th district, the coastal district, of enough officers to do our basic job? That's my biggest challenge. So I look forward to us hitting that 10,000 mark, and then frankly, I'd like us to even go up to 12,000. What do you think is the ultimate numbers we need to have to be totally where we need to be?
I think it's a balance between people and support. And I'll give you an example why. When you talk about property crimes and their priority, well, if somebody's burglarized, that's a very devastating feeling to be burglarized. And LAPD participated in a federally funded study where DNA evidence was taken from home burglaries, and they had two groups, one where they did not take DNA, one where they did take DNA. Well, they were able to identify many burglars from the DNA, and what they found is that in quite a few cases, these were violent criminals who were engaged in much more serious crime, just they happened to get caught in the burglary. So, you know, so I believe property crime is important for a lot of reasons, and as we increase those resources, we increase our reserve program, we fully understand the importance of traffic and transportation, and I know that that's also a big issue in your district. And all those things working together. I've heard numbers, you know, I've heard 12, 5, 13. The city's changing, so I don't know that that's a constant number, but I knew that, do know that wherever I look, I see a laser-like focus on the 10,000. And I think we reach that goal, reassess, and then establish a new goal after that.
Good. Captain Eaton and Captain Hiltner are my two captains, one in the Pacific Division, one in the West L.A. Division, and they're doing a terrific job interfacing with my community on a million different issues. I just want to get a sense that they can stay there a while. I don't like it when Chief Bratton moves them in and out quicker than I think they should. They start bonding, they start creating relationships, they start understanding the situation really at a very good level. And I'd like us to keep the stability, at least with those two captains and the people that I've worked with, the slows and a lot of the others.
Yeah, and that's a difficult issue, and I know that Councilmember Hahn has also raised that a number of occasions. You know, and the difficulty is this, when you get outstanding people, oftentimes they want to continue promoting in the organization. So when we have that, that is very difficult to say, gee, you've done an outstanding job, you're fully capable, but we're going to deny the promotion. What we can hope is that if that happens, we build on the successes and the relationships of the person who was there with the next person and hopefully continue giving you people equal or greater excellence. But it is a frustration, and I've seen it in my own community, and I do understand, I don't know if there's a great answer.
Yeah. Last question has to do with the explorers, and this is a touchy issue. I'm an openly gay guy, everybody knows that, and there's been a big deal concern that the same board of the Boy Scouts tends to be the same board of the Explorer program and that the potential for discrimination against gays and lesbians could happen. Do you have any sense about the Explorer program and that issue?
Yeah, it's a very difficult issue for me in particular because I was a product of the LAPD Explorer program. As a 15-year-old, I entered the Explorer program and for a number of years, had role models and mentors, the people who made meaningful contributions to my life. So on one hand, I see a value in that program, and on the other hand, I think it's important that we not in any way discriminate or have a situation where people would feel, perceive discrimination and be uncomfortable joining. So I do know that the city, I believe it's Public Works, is looking at the contract right now to determine if they're compliant as far as the relationship between the scouts and Learning for Life, and then we'll take a look at it. For me, though, the one thing that we've been able to look into is to be sure that in our program, that we don't discriminate in any way, and I'm comfortable that's the case. And then the next step is to look at the, you know, up the ladder, which is being looked at right now.
Yeah, and when the chief was here the other day, we had Gay Pride Day and the promotion of a great lady as a captain, open lesbian and all that. And I know he doesn't carry those bones of homophobia and has been very positive on it, but it continues to be an issue. I get bombarded because I was a Boy Scout, I had a great time, and I give out Eagle Scout things, and my own people attack me, and I say, well, I don't want to play politics with the kids and the parents, even though the national leadership are a bunch of wackos who are discriminatory and homophobic and wrong. I don't want to discriminate against the kids. So we're in a tough spot. But I look forward to leadership from you, you are president of the commission, in dealing with the issue of the explorers and the fairness in the issues for gays and lesbians.
We won't duck that issue, I promise you that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for stepping back up to the plate. You're a great civic leader and we're proud to support you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Laban, Mr. Zion, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Laban.
How are you?
Well, thank you.
What is the police department doing about traffic in Los Angeles? Give me a two-minute on traffic right now.
Well, we're doing a lot, and, but we also recognize that it's not only the police department, we do a lot with department transportation, so that we can leverage the different capabilities of the two departments. So whether it be enforcement, you know, you go back to education, engineering and enforcement.
Three Es.
Which, you know, we support that concept as well as DOT.
Right.
We think education, enforcement, engineering's important. We're doing a lot in terms of our people out in traffic, working the field. We're doing lots of items, safety items, pedestrian safety as well as vehicle safety.
Right.
We have worked with DOT in a program for recovering abandoned vehicles to free up more of our officers' time to work the field.
Who's the big chief in charge of traffic?
I would, you know, I believe it would be Repoli, although it's hard to find that chain of command in.
Right, so all I got to ask you, Alan, and you're a great guy who does great things, is I'd like to see the police commission develop that because next to our personal safety, traffic is the most irritating thing and the inability to move. And over the years, the police department, through what we would call management changes, administrative changes, the creation of the Department of Transportation, has removed more of their mission that once was much of LAPD's engagement in traffic. And I would love to see, I know I've asked for a deputy chief of traffic, and I've been convinced both by the chief and the chief of the Finance Committee of the City of Los Angeles that that position can be articulated in some other way, but there should be somebody who's a voice for that. Because public safety is absolutely number one in that issue, but transportation is right there.
Yeah, one thing, I'm sorry, one thing we did do at the commission level, we created a commission committee for transportation and traffic.
Good.
To raise the, elevate the importance of that within the department and engage the department and also interface with DOT. So at the commission level, we wanted to send a strong signal on the importance we place in transportation and traffic.
That's real important. And let me ask another question, too. Sociologists will tell you, criminalists will tell you, when economies have super challenges, crime could rise. With the challenge that our country faces now with the global economy, which has created wealth in other parts of the world for others, but our piece of the pie is getting smaller, who's doing the thinking over there in LAPD on these trends as it relates to criminology, crime, and the economy?
I hope every member of the department, because one of the things that we're trying to stress and I believe very strongly is that whether you're a P2, a basic street police officer, or the chief of police, you need to be a leader and take a problem-solving approach and use judgment and use that every day in what you do. And I think as long as we remember that our purpose is there to serve the community, make the community safer, both in perception and reality, we'll be better off. But it's not any one person's job, it's everybody's job to be a leader in that regard.
Well, I appreciate that. And lastly, on facilities, are you familiar intimately with LAPD facilities?
I think I have a good knowledge. I don't know that I would say it in a minute.
Yeah, the San Fernando Valley has been very successful due to planning of years past to create two new divisions out there and a new administration. I represent the central part of the city, which Northeast Division is as big as the city of Boston. It goes from Figueroa in Colorado to Santa Monica and Normandy, and we need to create a Northwest Division. I know I've talked to Ms. Hahn, who in her leadership possibly thinks that even though a new harbor station is coming in, maybe there'll be a larger facility in Wilmington that would do that. And even Mr. Rosendahl, with deep discussions that West L.A. is too gapped, too big. Is anybody doing any thinking about creating additional stations?
Yeah, there are people in the department who do look at that, and, you know, that's why we have new stations coming along the line right now.
Sure.
Having been to Northeast Station many times, yeah, they're in need of a new station.
Right.
Also. Also, again, it goes back to other equipment. So for example, we're starting to receive the new radios, which the council supported, and we're very appreciative of the council's support. The first division in the city to get them, and they're starting to get them this week, will be Northeast.
Okay.
Because they're one of the ones that have the most difficult radio problems, and that's a business.
The hillsides and all that. Commissioner Scobin, you're a great public servant, I thank you as a professional, you're a great businessperson in the San Fernando Valley, but also you're dedicated and you do the extra and always have been. So Alan, I thank you, you and your family for your service. Thank you for answering those very important questions. Mr. President, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Our next speaker is Mr. Zine.
Back to you.
Who I believe knows the commissioner a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Scobin, there's an article in this morning's Los Angeles Times California section, Rampart Officer Civil Award Appelled, $15 Million. And it states, in upholding the verdict, the three judge panel cited statements by detectives who admitted that they rushed their criminal investigation and testimony. And the District Attorney's Office says that the Police Department hounded two prosecute officers implicated in the Rampart scandal before the cases were ready. $15 million case, liability to the city for these officers. Now, obviously, it affected their lives, and now it's going to affect the taxpayers with a $15 million liability investigation done by the Police Department. How do we manage those investigations and be fair and objective so we can avoid a $15 million appellate court ruling for these particular officers? Now, they may be, come back to work or whatever, they're getting $15 million, the taxpayers' money. And according to the article, the department hounded and rushed investigation, didn't have all their facts, and that's part of the reason why they got the settlement. You as a police commissioner, the head of the Police Department, Internal Affairs, Professional Standards Bureau, how do we balance this so they can do a fair impartial investigation and not hold the taxpayers liable as we see in this case?
I don't feel that I can comment on the specifics of that case, but as a general picture.
In general, in general.
I think you have to look at the systems that are in place right now. You start with the strong civilian oversight, and the commission is not any one person. It's about a team working together, number one. And it's about some of the changes in attitude. So as an example, in Internal Affairs, you're seeing a total retooling of Internal Affairs. When there's a case where an officer needs to be terminated, we understand that. But it's also trying to change behavior, trying to change thinking, you know, so that we focus on the positive with people. So there's just a tremendous culture change that's going on right now. You know, the sad part is, when you've got that many people in so many complex situations, there will be mistakes. But I believe that you've got some very dedicated people working very hard to try to create an environment where you don't have those types of things happen.
Yeah, the part that I find disheartening here is that the detectives said they didn't have the time to complete their investigation, and they were hounded to push this forward for the criminal indictment, which obviously applies. And then now, the appellate court rules, and I don't know if it's going to be appealed to a higher court, but it was unanimous decision, as I read in this paper. The other question I have for you, I know you're very dedicated, you spend a lot of time at divisions, the patrol operations within the LAPD. We don't have sufficient patrol officers, whether it be the valley, the central, the south, the west. How do we, and we've had more officers on than we have before, I don't know where they're going, but they don't appear to be in the field in the uniform, in a black and white. And we got two new divisions opening, Tepanga and Olympic. Where are the bodies going to go to those divisions to provide additional patrol for the people of those districts?
Well, it goes back to the question Commissioner Councilman Roosevelt raises, is the right number of people? And we aren't on target for getting up to 10,000.
But the question is, where are they going? Where are they being deployed?
They're being deployed where, wherever the department believes they can be most effective. And again, I think it's a combination of priorities, right? Because you can have, you know, any one, 100 priorities in a given day. And so the chief who handles deployment tries to address those priorities. Certainly patrol is a high priority, and the visibility is critically important. You know, some officers are working what they call crew, which is a sort of a task force that goes to different parts of the city. But it's very complex. But at the end of the day, yeah, I do believe we don't have enough police officers to have the appropriate levels of patrol.
And then I got one final question. There's been a debate in this council about the airport. 22 officers assigned to the airport, over and above what the airport is paying for. This council's called for those officers to be redeployed back to the street operations, and the department's resisting that continuously. Airport has, airport police, we have LAPD assigned there, and these are 22 additional that aren't being paid for by the airport authority. And the airport says, we don't need them, take them back. And there's resistance within the department to take them back. How do we overcome an issue like that? Where we have 22 officers that the airport's not paying for, could be deployed in any divisions throughout the city to boost the patrol forces? And there's the situation where the department's saying, we're going to keep them there, we're not going to take them back.
Yeah, they were there because the chief of police believed that there is a point to have them there for safety. I can't, I shouldn't go on the limb, but I will, is my understanding that they may be taken back. We'd need to verify that, but I know there's been some serious discussion about that a little while ago, and I'll reconfirm that and get back to you.
My concern is that with the Pango opening and Olympic opening, to borrow from other divisions to put in those divisions doesn't really solve the problem to put additional personnel on the street. And I know in your operations, when you go out in the field, you see how few forces there are out there in the black and whites handling radio calls and doing patrol functions. And that's my concern, is that somehow we bolster those patrol divisions so they will have the personnel to handle the calls, get there in a proper time, and take care of the victims that call for a 9/11 assistance.
Absolutely. We owe it to the public and we owe it to the cops.
Pardon me?
We owe it to both the public and the officers.
Exactly. And I know that your dedication is there, you've done well. Has it been five years or six years you've been on the commission?
Five.
And you didn't go to public safety for review?
I appreciate that, I was waved through public safety.
You were waved through so you can get grilled here. Okay, congratulations. I know you're going to do well in that, you know you got my support and my vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes is our last speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to just rise and express my support publicly of Mr. Scobin. We see each other, we kind of like do this a lot, because you're so busy and we're all caught up in our different responsibilities. But I did want to say thank you for your work regarding the MacArthur Park situation. You know, sometimes when you hear from folks from other parts of the city, you're not sure if they really understand what happens in an area where there's 60,000 to 70,000 people per square mile, and the city average is 7,000. The worlds are very different, the pressures are very different. And you've been able to, I believe, express the types of concerns that applies to everyone, regardless of ethnicity, or color of their skin, or their income group. Mr. Scobin, you've been very professional and very balancing approach, and I truly appreciate that. You know, as we move forward with these new police stations, this whole notion of how we gather the stakeholders, the community leaders, to make this their home in a way in which we can offset the pressures and the gains that the gangs are making on our youth, especially in these very dense areas in the city. Do you think the commission, working with police, we can start being more creative in how we bring in these communities so that these new facilities actually become an extension of their day-to-day experiences? Is that something that's within the culture of the Police Department and the way the commission oversees the Police Department? Is that an area that you think we should explore?
It is, because as I said earlier, our whole purpose is to serve the public. One of the things that we noted at the commission level was that the new stations have very large community rooms. And the department, the commanding officers are encouraged to use those, whether it be community support groups or others, to come to their community police station. And I think you'll see much more openness in community policing in terms of the organizations, the PALs, the DAPs, you know, the other organizations. And even on tough areas like firearms, that where each station has a firearm simulator now for training, that we're inviting key members of the public to come in and experience that, try to get a better understanding. Part of it is, it's helpful for each of us to step in the other person's shoes, us with the public, the public with the department. And so I think you've hit on the key, because, you know, there's no way even 10,000 officers can be successful unless we have not only the support of the public, but we partner with the public, and they feel we're part of them.
Great. Well, thank you, Mr. Scobin, and again, look forward to working with you and as we go through our challenging days ahead of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. That is our last speaker, and let me personally thank you as well, Mr. Scobin, not only for your friendship, but the model of service for the city. You not only have the knowledge there, but you've put in the years, which, as we see in an era of term limits, people turn over quite quickly sometimes, you've actually not only been there as the in-front-of-the-scenes person, but the behind-the-scenes person for many years. And there's decades of knowledge, you're always one of the fairest people that I know as a commissioner, and I want to thank you for your service and your extraordinary focus on the men and women who put their lives on the line every single day. So with that, if you're sure you want another few years, we will take the vote. Last chance, you okay? All right, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
And congratulations, a round of applause for Commissioner Scobin. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 11 was called special for cards.
Okay, item 11, cards from the public. We have Zuma Dog on item number 11. Mr. Dog.
Yes, I'd like to spend one minute on this. This is about barricading of all openings and graffiti abatement. This is something that's on the agenda, a lot of items today. And what this is, when you have barricading, that's never good news. Okay, now, we know about the foreclosures, we know about the high price of oil affecting the economy with inflation, and what I'm saying is, we're going to see communities start to fold like a house of cards, and it's going to be like a domino of House of Cards tumbling and communities caving in. And this is what we're going to see, the first part of it right here, when we have the barricading of all openings and graffiti abatement. And here's the location, it's a parking lot. Oh, and here's the lien, then they collect the lien of $10,000. So there's also going to be a lot of money coming in when they force these barricades to be put up around these foreclosing communities and then get the lien fee. Buckle down, we got bad things coming economically, and more to come.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. That will close our public comment on this. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 18 called special for cards.
Okay, item 18 is our next one. We also have cards from the public, Zuma Dog on number 18. Okay, Mr. Dog waves with the hand movement across his throat. Number 19 is our next. Sorry, we have to vote on 18 if we can open the, oh, do you want to speak on 18, Ms. Gruel or 19? Neither. So, let's open the roll on 18 then, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay, number 19, you want to speak on, Mr. Dog?
Yes. I got confused. 18 was to raise the parking meter rates, so that just got approved to update. And when they say update, it says in up the parking meter rates. That's 18, which brings us to 19, green building fee. So here's going to be the new thing in the city. We're going to say, gee, to make this building, you have to make it green, and oh, yeah, now here's the fees. Let me look it up here. And there's a lot of fees and taxes that are being imposed. I heard Laura Chick yesterday at the event outside say that we're in big trouble with emergency preparedness, and now she's putting the fear that we're not ready in time for a disaster. So I guarantee you, you're going to start to see talk for, you know, emergency preparedness money in the form of a fee or ballot measure. She's just warming it up for the mayor. But this one is about 19, which is green building fees. And it says here that, yeah, okay, basically, I'm going to wrap it up by saying that what they're going to do here is force you to have green building ordinances in these buildings and then charge you a lot of fees for it. And you know what? You forgot to start my clock, but in the good spirit of the community of public comment, we'll just say I used one minute on it. Thank you.
Thank you. That will close our public comment on number 19. If we can prepare the roll, please.
Mr. President, the city attorney is requesting to hold it on the desk right now.
My apologies. Got a little too excited. And we'll close the public hearing, but we'll hold that on the desk. We're going to work out any of the problems with that, if we can go to the next item.
18, go forthwith, please. 18, go forthwith.
Forthwith on 18, without objection, absolutely. Number 20, I believe, is next.
Was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas, number 20.
Yeah, is the staff here on this item? They were here earlier. Yes, thank you. Apparently what we have is, the courts have determined that in order to be a signature gatherer, you do not have to be a registered voter in the city of Los Angeles if you're going to be gathering signatures for an issue that you want to put on the ballot for the city matters. So can you explain to me how we've arrived at having to change that to being a California registered voter?
Sure. Harith Trevetti from the City Attorney's Office. You're right, Councilmember. Earlier this year, a California Court of Appeal held that the local residency requirement on petition circulators is unconstitutional under the First Amendment. This was based on a Supreme Court case that came down in 1999. It says when you place a regulation on petition circulators, you are placing a burden on First Amendment rights to political expression, and that burden is not sufficiently justified in this case. Several circuit courts, federal circuit courts across the country, basically every federal and state court that's have looked at this issue since this 1999 Supreme Court case, has invalidated local residency requirements for petition circulators on these grounds.
So we're just talking about the local residency requirement of the circulator, not the person signing the petition saying, I agree that this should be on the ballot so that we could determine as a community whether or not we want this changed?
That, yeah, that's an important point, is that the interest of preventing outside influencing or limiting outside influence in city elections, the courts have held, is sufficiently met by the requirement that anyone that signs the petition be a registered voter of the city. This is a rule, a ruling that was only regarding the petition circulators, not the signers of the petition.
So basically, people in Orange County cannot sign a bunch of petitions and then, registered voters in Orange County cannot sign petitions and those signatures be valid to put something on the ballot for the city of Los Angeles purposes, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
But with this change, we can have an army of people come from Orange County, circulate petitions, and get signatures of alley city resident registered voters, and then turn those in?
That's right. Outside of non-resident, people can circulate petitions in Los Angeles.
Okay, but only the registered voters can actually be the ones signing the petition in the sense that's saying, my information and signature here says, as a registered voter of the city of Los Angeles, I agree with putting this on the ballot or what have you.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so this only pertains to the circulators, the people gathering signatures?
That's right.
They do not have to be a registered voter of the city of Los Angeles, and that's based on the fact that the Supreme Court and other courts around the country have concurred that that is a new standard?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Alacon, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Is there anything to prohibit us from requiring the signature gatherers to be registered?
Yeah, the Supreme Court has specifically held.
Not registered voter, just registered with the city of Los Angeles to be a signature gatherer.
The cases, the courts haven't ruled on that particular issue as a matter of, in requiring a signature gatherer to be registered with the clerk's office, for example, or in some other administrative way, is something that wouldn't be prohibited by the court cases. They speak specifically to whether you're a registered voter in the city or resident of the city, as long as non-residents can register that way.
The concern I have is full disclosure, that if the city's going to be inundated with people trying to gather signatures about things in Los Angeles, but they're not even from Los Angeles, I think the people signing that form ought to have the right to know that that person doesn't even live in Los Angeles. And it would seem to me that we could accommodate that without violating the spirit of the Supreme Court decision, or the appellate court decision.
That's definitely something that we can look into. I do know that the petition circulators, when they sign the petition, they have an affidavit that lists their address and their name and information like that. So that information is already disclosed. In that context, having it disclosed in advance is something that I think the clerk's office and City Attorney's Office can look into for sure.
Certainly. Also, it would allow us to better track who's financing various campaigns so that the voters, again, will have full disclosure as to who's behind a particular movement and be able to make a more informed decision on whether they want to sign the petition or not. So I would strongly encourage that we formulate, Mr. Garcetti, an instruction to have the clerk and the city attorney explore the requirement that signature gatherers must be registered with the city. with the city clerk or in some way identify that they are not residents of the city of Los Angeles when gathering signatures.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, and thank you to my colleagues, Mr. Cardenas and Alacon, for their questions. And let me do that at the very end. I just wanted to walk folks through a little bit about what we're voting on today and thank the city clerk for her good recommendations here. Folks, this cleans up our election code to make it compliant with some changes in state and federal law, but also to improve our operations and save taxpayer money. There's a number of revisions in here, and I won't go through all of them, but some of them that I think are important are: it provides a clear means to resolve a tie in general elections. People ask what that is. It's actually when there's a tie in a general election, we didn't have, as we do in primary elections, there's literally a flip of the coin or a drawing of lots, excuse me, drawing of lots to see who wins. Establishes that Saturday hours for receiving election documents are reserved only for the purpose of receiving candidate documents and not documents for referenda or recall and initiative petitions. We allowed the maximum size of voting precincts to remain at 1,250 voters, but to calculate the number of voters by first extracting the number of permanent absentee voters. This would allow us to create precincts that draw up to 1,250 voters who actually show up at the polls, not who happen to live in the area. We talked about the petition circulator stuff, and I'll get back to that in a second. The ballot simplification committee would be required to prepare text based on a standard for fair and impartial ballot summaries, which codifies our current practice but has not been codified before. Clarify guidelines for titles that may be used by the signers of ballot arguments. There's nothing more frustrating, I think, than for people out there to say, you know, "Are you against bad things?" Well, sure, and you sign it and don't realize what it is you're actually signing. "Are you for good things?" Well, I think so. You know, "Do you like kids?" Yep, sign here. So it would have to be clear and provide a balance among the makers of the arguments. Require the materials for ballot petition summaries, title, and question, et cetera, not be false, misleading, or inconsistent with the election code, which would also codify what practice has been but make it official, and require that all signatures for ballot measure be submitted together. It applies a timeframe to a recall notice and clarifies the word count for recall-related documents, and it clarifies that a voter can receive assistance to fill out a vote-by-mail application, which I know has been something that in the past, there's been gray areas as well. In terms of looking at some sort of registration system, something I'd be perfectly comfortable with city clerk reporting back on that, with the feasibility of that, I think there's that balance between First Amendment rights, if people can come in, you know, certainly at Mr. Rosendahl, for instance, if there's something going on in Santa Monica, I'm sure your residents would have a very strong stake and would want to be involved sometimes even in gathering those signatures to say, you know, "Stop," or prevent something that's going to be happening in Santa Monica that would, you know, affect West Los Angeles. But similarly, Santa Monica probably has a right to know who those folks are, to make sure it's not just a bunch of pros always coming in from Nevada or something. We want this to be of the people and for the people. So I'd be happy to, second Mr. Alacon's motion to ask for a report back on feasibility of that as well. And with that, you know, I know Mr. Boyarski, who left the Ethics Commission, and I think he was speaking before 2005, said the Rules Committee is a place where things traditionally go to die. I hope under my chairmanship, it's a place where things not only go on to live, but get passed, and I urge your support today because this helps us continue and expand the democracy for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 42 called special for cards.
Item 42, Mr. Zuma Dog. Pass on that one? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 42, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 52 called special for cards.
Go out to our San Fernando Valley with Donna Pearman.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Pearman.
Yeah, anyway, I'm really sorry about that election thing, because anybody in the country now can come over here and get something on the ballot. Anyway, right now, this is my own private chamber, Zuma Dog. I'm glad you won your fight with the Venice Beach. Kudos to Councilman Rosendahl, who showed the council members that you can serve. You see, you can pass all those taxes, and we don't have the money, so they ask for the parking fees, fees for immobilized vehicles, parcel tax. We need Howard Jarvis Organization to help tone down the parcel taxes. We need to put a limit on it. And renters, don't get fooled, the owners of the apartments get raised, they'll pass it on to you. Also, our city asks for sales tax increases also, it hits you in several different ways, while the city council still weighs fees. Has the council members put out the lion... Have the council members put out the lion's share? It's their idea, council members, you know who you are, so people can see it on the lacity.org. So if these events seem worthy, why don't you pay for it? Or it seems like some bright entrepreneur could come up with a bright idea to fund these without putting it on the city to pay. Wait, I have an idea. You can also have your friend the CRA or your rich developers to pay for these events. Or you can ask for... You can't ask for new money while you're using up all... While you don't have money for old... You don't have our old money. Can't anyone stop these fee waivers? We can't afford these fee waivers, the city expense, three times a week, really add up after a while. After a while, you run out. Re-run out a long time ago. Vote no on fee waivers. Thank you.
Mr. Zuma Dog on item 52.
Yes, and I would like to thank the LA Times last Sunday for their front-page article about nonprofit abuse. This ties into this because special event fees, it is Jack Weiss, the way... By the way, Jack Weiss, I see, is not here, the only council member in the country not here. Greg Smith excused out of the country. Otherwise, once again, Jack Weiss not here. But as far as when he was here several years ago, he said that when you waive these special event fees, you are essentially making a contribution to these charities. And if you read the LA Times article, I have been complaining about nonprofit abuse is the number-one financial drain on the coffers that's cheating the community and causing the city to fall into further disrepair. And it's because of what happens during these nonprofits that are getting money from the city. Basically, what happens is all this money is state money and local money, this federal money, given to city council to approve and handed out to nonprofit organizations. But what happens is you have, you know, big consultants and fees that are used and people front-end loaded management contracts is what it's called. Cronyism, cahootsism, racketeering, RICO violations. The money goes in like the Roach Motel, and it doesn't come out into the community, and that's the problem. And when you see the communities foreclosing and getting worse and worse, it's because the money is not being used efficiently as it's supposed to be. A very small percentage makes it the way it should. It's all these big corporations that run these nonprofits. It's a front, it's a scam, and you'll, again, thank you to the LA Times. Go online, because they did a front-page Sunday article after I asked them a couple weeks ago to please do so, and you'll find out why the city's in big trouble because of the fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption, otherwise known as racketeering of the nonprofit system the Mayor Antonio is taking control over. Federal investigation, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zuma Dog. That item 52 is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. I think we're going to go back to item number 19, and the city attorney would like to make a comment. Or... Ms. Perry?
Yeah.
We'll go to you first. Item 19.
Great, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to say for the record that I support the approval of the fee ordinance, and I have submitted an amending motion, 19A, that makes a technical correction to the green buildings ordinance. And if the council does choose to adopt the ordinance before them, continue my motion with a technical correction to Friday's council meeting to allow time for the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinance and satisfy the posting requirements.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. And in speaking with our land use attorneys, we're requesting that the matter, the ordinance be adopted as is, and that the technical amendments be placed on an agenda for next Tuesday so that we could discuss this with the Planning Department regarding deleting Section 1611(c) one of the municipal code.
Nothing I can do with that. Okay.
Okay.
Well, fine, Tuesday's fine. Okay.
Okay. So the action we will take today is...
Is to adopt the ordinance, that's the fee ordinance, and then...
Instruct...
Instruct the clerk to agendize and the city attorney to report to council next Tuesday with the ordinance, amending LAMC Section 1611.
Yes. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, 31 forthwith, please.
Okay, we're still on this item, but we'll do that after this. So that will be the order. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. And the other item, we'll be back on Tuesday. Thank you. And item 31 to go forthwith, the request of Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, there is a special one in the works, but it's not yet been circulated. Do you wish to do some housekeeping?
We could do some housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused to leave at 12:45 on Wednesday, July 16th, for city business that meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused for the entire meeting of July 16th for city business that meets council policy.
He'll be excused.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Wednesday, July 30th, to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business that also meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And that would clear the desk, except for the special one that's being worked on.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, is Mr. Parks here? Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks? On Rule 23, on a special one, would you like to discuss that item as the motion will be distributed?
Thank you, Madam President. That's a Rule 16.
Rule 16, not a Rule 23?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be coming back next...
Next week sometime.
Next week, okay. Not a Rule 23. Colleagues, are there any announcements today? Any announcements? Colleagues, do we have any adjourning motions? Yes, we do. Mr. Parks? Yes. If we could ask everyone to please rise in the council chambers. Mr. Parks?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of former Mayor Douglas Dollar Hyde from the city of Compton, who passed away Sunday, June 28th. He was born in 1923 in Earlsboro, Oklahoma. At the age of 17, he moved to San Jose, California, enlisted in the military in January 1942, served in Europe until 45 under General Patton's Tank Battalion with the Third Army Quartermaster Division, which was known as the Rolling Hellcats. At the end of the war, he moved with his wife and daughter to Los Angeles. He was a postal employee for a number of years. He attended Metropolitan College Business and the Long Beach City College, and also studied law at LaSalle University Law School. In 63, he was elected to Compton City Council, where he served as the Chair of the Finance Committee and representing Compton as a delegate to the League of California Cities. He was affiliated with numerous civic organizations such as the Compton NAACP, chairman of the NAACP Freedom Fund, also served as first vice president of the Southern Area Conference. He was a charter member of the past master of the TA Harris Lodge, number 69. 69, he was voted or elected as the mayor of Compton, as the first black mayor of Compton. He instituted many improvements in housing, labor, anti-drug policies, and he also lobbied countless hours for a new city hall and community center. That community center was renamed in 1979, the Dollar Hyde Neighborhood Center in his honor. Under the administration of Governor Pat Brown, he served as a member of the Planning Advisory Committee of the State of California. After his term as mayor of Compton, he became a realtor and a mortgage broker in the San Fernando community, where he resided and retired over the last several years. He survived by many family members.
Ms. Hahn and Ms. Perry?
Thank you. Ms. Hahn and Ms. Perry.
Any other adjourning motions? Yes, Mr. Zine.
Robert Lee Harns passed away July 6th, born in Joplin, Missouri, December 3, 1937. Moved to California when he was 15 years of age, resided in the San Fernando Valley with his wife and children, owned and operated Harns Termite and Pest Control Company, receded for 23 years. Always be remembered for his passion for the horses. Be missed by his family and friends, survived by three children, Robert, Barbara, Thomas, six grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren, Robert Lee Harns. May he rest in peace. And my other adjourning motion is for retired member of the LAPD, Edmund B. Burns. Passed away July 8th, born in New Boston, Texas, on August 9, 1945. Joined the Los Angeles Police Department February 18, 1975. Retired May 31, 2003. Did assignments at the Academy, Harbor Patrol, Southwest Patrol, South Bureau Crash, and South Traffic Division, which was his last assignment. Great man, will be deeply missed by his family, friends, and colleagues. Survived by his wife, Bobby Crawford, daughter Janelle, sons Damon, Victor, Larry, five grandchildren. May he rest in peace, Edmund B. Burns.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, yes. You want to be added to that?
Yes.
Mr. Labange?
Yeah, but adjourning motions, members, ask we adjourn in memory of Carmel Delena's Hall, who lived a good life and was a good person. I also like to ask we adjourn in memory of Bill Loft House, who was a great friend of Los Angeles, was the man who was our... Our person who designed our floats for so many years for the Rose Parade. He was responsible for the floats that LA Visitors Bureau and others had put in here. He founded Phoenix Decorating Company and built floats for both the Orange Bowl Parades in Florida and our Fiesta Bowl Parade in Arizona, as well as our very own Rose Parade. His legacy is tremendous. He is the one who did many of the innovative things and expanded the joy of the New Year's Day pageantry. He is survived by his son, Chris, two daughters, Michelle and Cindy, and brother David, as